Thank you very much. Welcome to tonight's action meeting. I think we'll just get right into it, if that's okay with everybody. So a call to work. We'll do our pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First off, I'm going to announce the suspension of Board Policy 006.1 with specific regard to the limitation on the number of school board directors participating in a meeting electronically and the requirement of having a majority of the board physically present at a meeting location.
Madam President, and that item does require a vote.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
No, moved.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we will have now the audience of citizens for the action meeting. Mr. Gilmore, is there anyone? Of course, Mr. Patchell. I see his blue hand raised. Is he there to make public comment?
Actually, there are no blue hands raised that I see currently. So if there are any folks who would like to make public comment, raise your hand in the interface, and then I will be able to open up your microphone.
I thought Mr. Patchell.
There he is. I got you. Yes, your hand's going up and down there. We got you. All right, Mr. Patchell, we have opened up your mic, and as soon as you unmute, you can begin your comment.
Thank you. I really enjoy these back-to-back meetings because it's like a doubleheader down at Citizens Park. It's really nice. I enjoyed pitching in both games. But anyway, what I want to talk about is, you're running out of time here. You know that. You don't even know how many kids are going to come back. You don't know how many teachers are going to quit. You don't know how many substitutes do you have? You don't have anybody in the bullpen. If you lose any of your pitchers, I tell you what, you're going to have to forfeit the game. Here's another thing. Mr. Koss is here. I mean, no. Oh, yes. I like that about the electric bill. That was good. The due diligence, we'll be peeling back the onion. Why are we paying so much for the electric bill? It all adds up. I know nickels and dimes are almost insignificant, but that's what we need to do because you're not going to have any money. I rode by Sears. It's empty. That mall, they're going to be at the tax. They want rollback. All the strip owners, rollback. And now what? Most of the homeowners are going to opt for six months. How's your available fund balance? This isn't going to look real good because you've got to keep writing checks. I don't know where you're going to get the money because I'm only going to mail you $758 every single month, all the way to December, and I'm going to hand-deliver it down there so it isn't late. I'm going to put it at the police station in Montgomery Township. You have to understand, how many people in this district are out of work? Why are they getting free lunches? You know why they're getting free lunches? Because when I watch France 24, there's people in that country, they don't have any food. They can't go to the doctors. They can't. You've got 35 million people out of work. You think this district's blessed and everybody's got 100% employment? I tell you what, I don't know what propaganda machine. I think Tokyo Rose didn't really die. She's broadcasting misinformation. Your buses, if you get shut down again, what are you going to do? You're going to be back in a soup again. You've got to have a plan that people can carry forward. You don't have time for canvas. You don't have time for any of this stuff. You know what? All of you guys are making a ton of money. Not one of you have missed a paycheck. You ought to get out there and find out. Single moms? Well, how am I going to go to work? My kid can't be home with a computer. He's on a split shift. When you get something worked out with a concrete scheduling where you can give it to the people, get some feedback, stop with his bureaucratic administrative crazy ideas. It doesn't work. I tell you what. This is just the very beginning. If this was World War II, you know what this is? Early 1942, I think Doolittle's put the bombs on the plane. You've got a long way to go. It's going to be tough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, Tracy Mengele Olamua, if I pronounced that correctly. Tracy, I've opened up your mic. As soon as you unmute, you can begin your comments tonight.
Thank you. What I was actually interested in talking about tonight would be the, obviously, thank you to the district for showing support at our local protests regarding Black Lives Matter and racial equality in the community. I was wondering where the district is sitting currently on upcoming policy changes, inclusion activities. Where are we going from here in the district? Because obviously, you've all seen online this week and previous weeks that it's a pretty tumultuous landscape here in the community. And obviously, we need the district to take control of that as far as our kids and their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Some of those things we're going to be discussing tonight, two of the things will be under other business at the end of the meeting. An equity statement and a resolution by the board, anti-racism resolution. So there will also be another public comment at the end of this meeting if you want to make a comment about that. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment?
There are no hands raised, so one hand is raised, so stand by. Mr. Ziegler just raised his hand, and his mic is open. So as soon as you unmute, Mr. Ziegler, you can begin your comments tonight.
Good evening. I just had a quick comment about the return-to-play procedures. I know you're going to go over that later in this meeting. Just looking this over, I'm interested in certainly hearing more at some point about how you're going to manage compliance with this. And there were a couple of pieces that aren't quite fleshed out yet. In particular, the notorious standards for who can be present during competitions. There's a reference to USA Swimming, but their guidelines don't address that issue at all. They only address how to manage as many kids in practice in the pool at one time and still achieve social distancing, but it doesn't address anything about ventilation standards or how many people can be in what square foot of building. So I would encourage the board to address that before they finalize that document. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Gudor. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment?
Reminder to raise the hand in the interface so we can see you. And a reminder, it doesn't look like any other hands are up, that we have a second public comment at the end of the meeting. I think that's it. This is Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Okay, we'll move on then to the approval of the minutes from June 18, 2020, action meeting. Do I have a motion?
No.
Motion by Dr. Lewis Campbell, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Are there any comments or questions? Being none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on now to the superintendent's report. Dr. Dietrich?
Thank you. I recommend the approval of a collective bargaining agreement between the district and the North Penn Educational Support Professionals Association for the period of July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021, in accordance with the terms of the tentative agreement.
Do I have a motion?
No.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley and seconded by Mr. McBane. Do I have any comments or questions? I see none, so all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the approval of the North Penn High School return-to-play procedures for athletics and marching nights as stated in the attached document. I will note that as we continue to get guidance from the state, we will continue to make adjustments. This is as it stands as of today, July 7, 2020.
I believe to Dr. Ziegler's question that there are no spectators currently allowed under this space. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's all still being discussed by Harrisburg and the various folks there. So we're waiting for continued guidance on that. I think realistically, if we have competitions, as we're hoping we will, the available seating will be very limited because of the restrictions based on crowd sizes and that sort of thing.
Is there a way we need to adjust what the guidelines are for these procedures? Or is it just we don't have to keep revoting them doing?
Well, the solicitor can certainly weigh in.
Sure. The Pennsylvania Department of Education did put out guidance today, I believe. It was primarily focused on the mask-wearing requirement, but as part of that guidance, it did indicate that adjustments to the district's health and safety plan as situations occur, that updates to that plan should be brought back before the board for approval of each planned revision, and then that board-approved revision be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education so that they have the latest board-approved version of our health and safety plan. So I think the answer to that question is, it's likely that for all of the upcoming board action meetings, this may be just a constant item of approving revisions to our plan that is certainly a work in progress.
So for the comments that Dr. Ziegler just made, if we approve it this evening, is there anything in there right now that would be postponed or delayed because of the edits that he's proposing be completed?
No, I don't see a need to do any kind of postponing or anything like that. There's nothing in there that would be concerning, that we would have to postpone. That is the very latest guidance as of July 7. So that's what we have. But as our solicitor mentioned, we may be in front of you again with updates and modifications as we get continued guidance from Harrisburg.
Madam President?
I'm sorry.
So, and that's through Safe Schools, one of the issues that I would defer as well to first responders and our local law enforcement because of the input that they had about graduation was very important in our decision-making process. So very interesting to make sure that they're integrated into this process as well, even though it might fit PDE standards, does it fit the local standards that we have for public safety?
Good point. Thank you, Mr. Kossa. Okay, so.
Because this is a living document, where will this live on the North Penn website? So that if parents or participants of the community had questions and they wanted to reference it, where will we have a prominent place on the website for that?
Yes, we certainly can do that, Julianne. That's a good suggestion. I mean, naturally, it's here, but I like putting it a little more out there on the front page with the, there's a portion there where we typically would put things like this, so I like that. Thank you.
Let me ask it further, and I guess to the solicitor. I understand they're saying that it should come back to the board, but is it required to come back to the board? Or could this board make the decision that it is a living document, that we have confidence that the administration will incorporate all of the necessary guidance so we don't have to do this in an iterative process? Or is there a specific guidance that we must follow?
Sure. The guidance that the department released today indicated that plans do need to be reapproved by local boards. So the Department of Education has put that out as its direction, and certainly, the governor's order on reopening is that schools, in order to reopen, must adhere to the guidance set forth by PDE. So I do think there's probably a little bit of distinction that can be drawn between revisions to our health and safety plan and perhaps revisions to documents that we might develop, sort of protocols that might not be contained within the plan, but might govern some of the day-to-day activities that we have. Those might be more flexible on a day-to-day basis in terms of how many students we have participating, or as conditions might adjust. But in terms of changes to the plan itself, as far as the Department of Education is concerned, it's a requirement that those come back before the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summer. Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, so I should have taken the motion first. I apologize. Do I have a motion?
No.
Motion by Mr. Rush, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. We are in the question part, so all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Recommend approval to advertise for public bids for cleaning and sanitation supplies and personal protective equipment.
Do I have a motion?
No.
Motion by Mr. Kossa and seconded by Dr. Wanda Lewis Campbell. Do I have any questions? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Okay, so next up will be other business. And the first thing under other business tonight is an equity statement and beliefs of the board. So this was discussed at the policy committee last night. And this will be our first opportunity for the other board members who are not part of the policy committee. They have a chance to read it, and if they have any comments or questions, suggestions, edits, whatever, now would be the time to discuss it.
I'd just say before folks get a chance to have their input that this is a part of a three-phase implementation. The reason why this statement was in policy at all was because it's going to preempt an equity policy, which itself will preempt an equity action plan. So this is sort of a statement of our principles. There was some comment of policy last night that there wasn't a lot of teeth to it, and that's not necessarily what this is supposed to be. This is a statement of our beliefs as a district. So just keeping that in mind while we're discussing it.
And Mr. Fusco, I believe this is the first of a three-part plan that is suggested from the PSBA.
Correct. Yeah, this is the recommended course from the Pennsylvania School Board Association when taking up equity policy. This is an important first step, this statement of principle.
Do you want to read it out loud?
I think it's.
I haven't did it last night.
I did last night.
Do you want to read it again?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Okay, "North Penn School District Equity Statement and Beliefs of the North Penn School Directors, the North Penn School District. In an effort to make the North Penn School District a more equitable institution of learning for all students, the Board of School Directors of the North Penn School District hereby adopts the following equity statement. Purpose of education. It is economically and morally vital that the North Penn School District prepare all of our students to be college and/or career-ready, to actively participate in our democracy, and to respect, value, and include diverse peoples. The call for equity. Recognizing the critical role of school leaders in the provision of education of our students, the Board of School Directors of the North Penn School District calls for equity. Equity is the just and fair distribution of resources based upon each individual student's needs. Equitable resources include funding, programs, policies, initiatives, and supports that target each student's unique background and school context to guarantee that all students have equal access to a high-quality education. Students in the North Penn School District enter school buildings with their school supplies ready to learn. Students also bring with them unique gifts, individualized learning styles, skills, experiences, and cultural identities. A significant number of our students also carry the weight of poverty, racism, sexism, trauma, and other forms of prejudices and conditions that affect how they perform in school. Achieving equity ensures that students' identities will not predetermine their success in schools. As school leaders, we have an obligation to ensure that each and every child has the opportunity to fulfill the purpose of education by addressing the individual needs and concerns of students. This is essential in order to eliminate achievement and opportunity gaps created and perpetuated through disparities that include, but are not limited to, underrepresentation of students of color in advanced placement courses, disproportionality in the frequency of suspensions and expulsions for students of color, disproportionality in the identification of students of color for special education services, lack of representation of the Black experience in educational curriculum materials, and inequitable distribution of district resources. Achievement gap is the academic disparity or differences between groups of students. Typically, the achieving gap pertains to major differences in academic indicators such as test scores and graduation rates between white students and students of color, economically advantaged and economically disadvantaged students, male and female students, English proficient and English learner students, and special education and non-special education students. The opportunity gap represents how the educational system delivers education to different groups of students. Disparities in educational delivery lead to different academic, social, and economic outcomes between students due to the inequitable distribution of opportunities, resources, and funding. In the pursuit of equity, the Board of School Directors of the North Penn School District is committed to assessing our actions locally and acting to address both individual and systemic issues of inequity in order to overcome institutional barriers and create opportunities so that all children have the tools and supports necessary to achieve their highest potential. The Board is dedicated to advancing and enacting equitable policies, practices, and programming in our schools and throughout our community."
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. And I believe the majority of that was taken from PSBA. We added a few things, like the list of the five specific goals.
There was a couple additions. There was a few omissions as well. There was a statement about advancing a conversation. And in consultation with Mr. Summers, we decided to remove that because we feel that this is not about advancing a conversation. This is about taking action. This is a district that had passed a cultural proficiency plan two years ago. This is work that we've been, this is not something we've come to all of a sudden. And that conversation began then. So we wanted to be clear with this, that this is not just about keeping that moving. It's about acting.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Correct, Mr. Kossa.
Really, to build upon Mr. Fusco's statement is highlighting that this is part of a proactive effort. Three of us currently on this board ran in 2017 and were elected as with the rest of the board members who have been elected since. This is about a movement across the community to make sure that equity is at the forefront of what we do. It reminds me of the same challenges, not exactly the same language, but what full-day kindergarten means to the entire community. So does this equity policy. It is not something that we put on the shelf and point to to pat ourselves on the back. It's real. It's actionable. And we wouldn't be here today making this statement, though it's in light of some horrible incidents in society that remind us about the 100 years of systemic racism that we're dealing with. This is about today in our community, putting this at the forefront of what this school district believes in. And though this isn't about a conversation in the statement, this is putting our flag in the ground as school board directors to say that if you work at North Penn, you need to understand what this statement means. And what it means is we move forward with the next steps for equity and in the statements that we have as a board. Because it is about action. It's not just about words. We're done being reactive, and this is a time for us to embrace that conversation when people do feel uncomfortable about this statement. Because you know what? We're going to continue to turn those screws to make sure the policy equals action. And if his employees or staff members or administrators are uncomfortable with that, well, then we need to have those difficult conversations and move forward. But this board will not just make a statement to simply create a headline. We're doing this to change a community and to reflect our community's aspirations and goals.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kossa, because not only are we doing equity tonight, but we're also doing an anti-racism resolution because we want to be clear with this community that we believe in the potential of all of our students, and we're committed to making the necessary accommodations to help them achieve their full potential, and we will not tolerate racism in any form, and we commit to combating it head-on as a group. And that is what we are starting working toward with this conversation tonight.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? No? Okay. Then can I have a motion where you're going to have this go to action meeting on July 16? So that would be next Thursday. So can I have a motion to move to the next action meeting, please?
No.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mr. Kossa. Is there any further comments? Showtime, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next up then. Recommend moving the resolution supporting the development of an anti-racist school climate in the North Penn School District to the action meeting on July 16. We have an anti-racism board resolution. And I will just take a moment to read through it. "The resolution supporting the development of an anti-racist school climate by the Board of Directors of the North Penn School District. Whereas we are deeply saddened and outraged by the recent killing of George Floyd and violence against Black men and women, the subsequent protests have shined a spotlight on the harmful effects of racism and inequality. Furthermore, the public response was highlighted, the racial trauma that our Black students, families, staff, and communities have not only endured for centuries, but continue to face today. Whereas, we must recognize that racism and heat have no place in our schools and society. However, we must understand that racism is systemic, and it is unconsciously and consciously rooted into our institutions, policies, and practices. Consequently, we acknowledge that we must look at our own school policies and practices through an anti-racist and equity lens to address traces of racism and inequity that still exist within our own school community. Whereas, we must center the voices of staff, students, families, and communities who have historically endured discrimination and marginalization. Their lived experiences and stories require attention, require respect, require empathy, and most importantly, require action. Therefore, it is essential that we establish an expectation that a diversity of students, families, and community members, specifically those who have been ignored, discriminated against, and marginalized, are heard and included on substantial school and district issues. Whereas, we must better educate ourselves and seek to educate the community on historical and current impact of racism and discrimination on our students, families, and communities, as well as understand our role in perpetuating such inequity. Through continuous professional development and opportunities for honest dialogue and listening sessions, we hope to build partnerships in communities focused on overcoming racism and other barriers. By doing so, we can create opportunities to ensure that each child has the tools and supports needed to thrive. And whereas, we must advocate to advance civil rights and cultivate an anti-racist school climate necessary to meet the needs of all students in our care. Our students, no matter their race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, language ability, disability, and other identities, deserve to feel safe, to feel seen, and to feel affirmed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the North Penn School District unequivocally stand firm in our collective responsibility to foster an equitable and inclusive environment for every student, staff member, parent, and community member. We commit to use our role as school board directors to recognize, respond, and speak out against injustice and racial inequity in our school community. In support of this goal, the Board of Directors of the North Penn School District commits to the following action steps. One, passage of an equity statement, an equity policy, and an equity action plan. Two, meetings between students and school board members to discuss issues relevant to race within the North Penn School District. Three, a biannual review of academic, social, and emotional process and discipline data is segregated by race. Four, an annual. Four, an annual climate survey to gauge the community's response to institutional reforms related to the district's cultural proficiency plan. Five, the ongoing professional development for all North Penn teachers, administrators, and staff. Six, the creation of building level steering committee for each school that will include parents, building leaders, and teachers. And finally, seven, an equity advisory council as accountability measure at the district level. So do I have any comments or questions? No, seeing none, then do I have a motion to move this on to the action meeting for September, or I mean for July 16th, next Thursday?
I'm moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casse. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, then. I guess this brings us to the next audience of citizens, Mr. Gilmore.
Before we move on, audience of citizens, I had planned to ask this question at ECI, and we ran out of time, so I'm going to ask, oh, we have a couple minutes here. We had a plan in place for families that were being redistricted to Nash and to Gwinnett Square from Inglewood before COVID happened, that would otherwise be in the works probably right now, some opportunities for students to tour the school and have a chance to meet with some of their future classmates or teachers. And obviously, COVID has thrown a monkey wrench in that plan, but those students and those families are still having to go through this process on top of everything else that they're dealing with right now related to COVID. They also are having to go to another school. So I was wondering if there has been any discussions about what we can try to do for those families specifically to try to make this transition a little easier for them?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Fusco. The administration is working on that plan, and as you, you know, stated there, it got derailed by the COVID, but the need is still there. So we are making adjustments so that we can have those families as we are best able to help them to transition as effectively as possible. So they will be hearing something real soon.
Right, I'm sure they're glad just to know that they are still being considered at this point, because there, you know, there's so much for you all to have to consider right now in regard to the restart, but we don't want to leave those families out to dry. So thank you for that.
Does anyone else have any other business before the second public comment? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Gilmore?
Just really quickly, I'm sorry, one idea for the resolution. I love, I know that we're going to be developing this into more of an action plan, and I love the idea of having conversations with students. I think we should offer that same opportunity separate, also to staff and administration, so that we can begin to learn to hear about concerns and issues and, and quite frankly, innovation and great ideas that teachers may have with regards to addressing issues of equity and being informed in the plan. So I love that inclusion of conversations with students, and then separately would also just love to have that opportunity to continue to engage with teachers and administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Romic. Can you send an email in that regard so we don't forget? Anyone else have any other business or further comments to make? Okay, then I guess we'll go on to the second public comment. Mr. Gilmore, I see a couple hands up in the reading room here.
Yeah, and I'm going to go in the order, Lauren Wilson is up first here. Lauren, I'm opening your mic, as soon as you unmute, you can begin your comments.
Hi, thank you. So first, I just wanted to take a minute and say I appreciate both the equity statement and the anti-racist statement. I think it's really comforting to see the action that the district is taking and the board and the commitment there. I just had a question, I'm not sure if I missed it in either statements. Was there a comment or inaction around representation from a staff perspective and a commitment there? That was my only question.
I don't believe that there was, but that is in our, in our plan that we have, that we set when we first came on the board was to hire more diverse staff, be more representative of the community that we represent. So that, that was already-
Part of our cultural proficiency plan. It's impacted an entire goal around that of our four goals of making our hiring and our staffs more like the students we serve.
And that cultural proficiency plan is on the website. And I don't know if you've seen that, Ms. Wilson, but it's on, if they're available for everybody to see if they would like to, it's on the North Penn website.
Oh yeah, I have, I didn't know if that was a specific call out here.
The goals are listed, there's four goals, I believe, on that cultural proficiency plan.
And Ms. Wilson, I can assure you that the administrative leadership team stands fully behind all of these items in those two, both the board beliefs and then the anti-racism statement there and the various steps that we're taking.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I do have one last point, so just to follow on Julianne's point about including staff. I know we mentioned that there would be a school-level committee. I'm just wondering if there's an avenue for parents, and I know we have a couple avenues that we have right now, like the Cultural Proficiency Parent Committee. So I'm just wondering what the best way as a parent, my voice can be heard and which is the one I should be choosing to spend my time on?
I can jump in, Ms. Stowe. So if any parents who are watching who are interested in participating, you can reach out to the principal of your school, they are aware that we're moving forward with this. You can also either reach out to Dr. Waters or me. We co-chair the Cultural Proficiency Committee, and we could also put you in touch and discuss what some of the options are.
Thank you, Dr. Rucel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Okay, Mr. Jim Thompson is up next. I'm going to go ahead and hit, allow his mic to be open. As soon as you unmute, Mr. Thompson, you can begin your comments.
Hello?
We got you.
Okay. I had a comment about the, the nature of the statement on the equity statement and beliefs. I was a little worried about it yesterday, but hearing the reaction in that suicidal way by one of the board members about racism, systemic racism, et cetera, within the North Penn School District, I actually found offensive. I don't think that there are disproportional frequencies of suspension without merit. I don't think that there are, this, the general use of the term disproportionality in all of those five statements was very disturbing to me. The board seems to be painting a very negative picture of the North Penn School District. And quite frankly, I'm offended, and I think everyone in this district should be offended about this. It seems like the board is populated, and this is a criticism of the board, by a number of activists who want to change the morality and ethics of the entire community based on control of the school board. So I was a little worried yesterday, but hearing, hearing that conversation today has really made me very, very worried. So I think that you need to do a better job about defining what racism is, how you see it as it exists in the North Penn School District and in the community, and how North Penn School District is exhibiting systematic racism. Because I don't think that you're doing a good job of explaining it, and I think it's just verbiage and, and I don't know how else to describe it. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Ms. Stowe, if I just may, real quick. The statements that are made are, what we're doing in order to approach this, if you look at the cultural proficiency plan, is to look at our own data, to look at our own suspensions, to look at the enrollment of students of color, Hispanic students, multiracial students in things like AP courses. So to suggest that, we are not saying that North Penn is this terrible racist institution. What we're saying is, we can improve, you know, that institutional racism exists in this country in many forms, in policing and education. And North Penn is not exempt from that in any way. We want to do better by our students, and we know, we've heard from students who suggest that we can do better, families, it's just that we can do better, and we are doing our best to respond to those families. And we are doing through so, doing so through data analysis as our main driving tool on how to improve.
May I respond?
That took sort of your time, so I'm sure you can.
Go ahead, Mr. Thompson, I'll let you respond.
Well, the data is not clear, and none of these terms are justified in the statement. So maybe you have some data, but if you're going to put it in a statement, you should at least reference what it is. In terms of the AP, that may be the case, I really don't know, because I haven't seen the data. But you're making a statement for the entire community. And as I said, in reading this, it paints a very negative picture of the North Penn School District. And furthermore, your assertion about systematic racism, that's one of those things that you say, well, everybody knows it. It's, if you, if you can't see it, then you're systematically racist. And I object to that, you haven't defined what it is, and you haven't shown and told me or the rest of the community how North Penn School District is guilty of the sin of systematic racism. And this document is inflammatory to me, and it is unsubstantiated. So it is, it's really a problem. And again, by saying systematic racism exists, that's not proving anything about systematic racism. You're not even defining what it is.
Well, thank you for your comments, Mr. Thompson. I can say, as a North Penn graduate myself, and I sent three children to North Penn that all graduated, I am very proud of our district. I ran for office, the first time I ran was in 2011, and it took me four times to actually win. And, you know, I know when I ran with my fellow school board directors, Christian Fusco and Mr. Casse, Jonathan Casse, we all ran with the goal to make change. We're not going to just sit here and go through our terms. This is what we think is morally right thing to do. And I know that our other fellow school board directors that got elected last year, they felt the same way, they're very supportive of what we were already doing, and wanted to join with us in this work. You know, I, I feel like we're doing what is best for all of us at North Penn. And, you know, we're going to make the best use of our time here. And I know I can sleep at night knowing that I have done what I thought was the right thing. If you don't agree with that, you know, I'm sure that there'll be other people, you know, we're up for election next year, Jonathan, Christian, and I, and you can certainly, you know, vote, vote us out. But I think while we're here, we're trying to do what we think is right, and we are trying to try to affect change that is positive for all of our kids. So thank you for your comments. And, Mr. Gilmore, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment tonight?
Yes, we've got a couple more.
Ms. Stowe?
Is up next. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Stowe, can I say something? This is-
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I can't see everybody on screen. Go ahead, Mr. Casse.
Okay, I had said something earlier, but my server is sitting on my desk, I saw that it says internet service is going in and out. But I'd just like to address that as a parent of two adult children who came through this district, and a resident of this community going on 25 years this August, the systematic racism has been very obvious. And if you talk to any parent that has been in this district, and several who are still here, and ask them about some of the inequities-
Dr. Campbell, I think you're going in and out. Last round for video.
Okay, I said that as a resident of this district 25 years in August, and as a parent of grown children who went through this school district, yes, systematic racism is certainly alive and well in this North Penn community. And if you talk to any number of Black or parents of color, they can attest to things that have occurred to their children, they know about disproportionality of children being disciplined and not being able to access AP courses and the like, and it's there. It may not be there from everyone's vantage point, but those who know it, know it.
Dr. Lewis Campbell, I think we lost you. Okay, I think we'll take this one, we'll go- Yeah, now you're back, yep. Are you still there?
Yes. We can do better, we can increase the number of people that look diverse even in our, our teaching and administrative area.
Dr. Lewis, I think you're up again. All right, I think, Mr. Gilmore, we'll go on to the public comment.
Many of the victims are doing, so I just wanted to put that out there, and I hope everyone could hear me.
For the most part, thank you, Dr. Lewis Campbell.
Okay, next up for audience citizens, Jennifer Porter. I'm opening up your mic, and as soon as you unmute your mic, you can begin your comments.
As soon as you unmute your mic, you can begin your comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so first I want to say thanks to Mr. Fusco for bringing up the, the Inglewood, Gwinnett Square rezoning or districting. My only concern is, in the event that COVID rears its ugly head and we're back in lockdown again in the fall, is there an option or at least a thought of our children staying put in Inglewood with students that they know? And I'm just looking at it from a anxiety and stress point for the children, being as though we don't know if we're going to be able to go into the school and meet our teachers and things like that prior to starting in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter, that's a good question. Dr. Deeford-
I can't-
Thank you. Dr. Deeford, would you be able to respond to that?
So I apologize, I didn't quite understand exactly what it was that she was asking. When COVID rears its ugly head in the fall, did she mean if we don't ever go back to opening and we're 100% virtual again, or I wasn't real clear about that? So maybe I should, why don't we do it this way? If we could connect tomorrow, I think we probably could do better. So, Ms. Porter, if there's a way that you could email me your phone number, I'll call you tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Deeford.
Okay, up next, we have Tracy Mangle Olamua. I'm opening up your mic, so when you're ready, you can unmute your mic and begin your comments.
Thank you. I was just, wanted to head back to, I know we're going to develop an action committee
I think everybody's-
This creator, this member is, you know, in kind of, you know, in violation of this statement that the board has now passed, what are the steps? What happens next? Is it, you know, what are we, what are the remedial actions for instances of racism from our staff?
I'm sorry, like, you were going in and out, so I didn't really hear the whole question. Are you talking, did you ask about what are the consequences if we don't adhere to the policy, or is that what you were referring to?
Right, moving forward, if there are, you know, when we're fine, our teachers, any of our teachers are not in compliance with the statement, the policy, what happens next? And where, where do they go from there? And how can, as parents, us be assured that there is going to be steps taken so that anyone that does have those views isn't teaching our kids?
Right, I think that all has to get worked out now, and this is the first step, these are the first steps that we're taking, and that will be, you know, be addressed as we move forward with our action plan.
And I think one step to clarify too procedurally is that, that these policies and statements were first reviewed of the full board this evening, and they will be formed- and they will be formally voted at our action meeting, which is on Thursday the 16th.
Correct.
So first step is to review, to process, to synthesize, to take the feedback, to hear community input, and then to be able to then vote on that on Thursday the 16th.
Thank you.
And there is no silver bullet answer to that question. I mean, obviously as issues arise, administration is going to have to take appropriate steps to, to address concerns. But what we are doing here today is making sure that the community knows that, that the teachers and the families and the administration of this district know where this board stands, where we want to, where their actions need to start from. It certainly needs to start from where the board expects behavior to be addressed. So we can't give you a simple answer to that specific question. It has to be situational, but clearly we're sending a message right now tonight about what the board is willing to tolerate. And I think we've made it pretty clear that it's, it's not a high bar.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Madam President, this is Kathy. Can I just follow up with kind of reiterating what everyone said or is our timeout?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, so the commenter, the gentleman that spoke about his concerns about the, the statement that we stated, I think he brings up a good point and I support both statements that were approved by the board tonight for a few reasons. It is something again that Mr. Fusco, Madam President Stoll and Mr. Costa commented on that this is what they ran on in 2017 and we ran on in 2019. There have been data reviewed at committee levels, there have been policies reviewed, comments made, changes have started. But to, to Mr. Fusco's point, the statements that were put out tonight not only set the roadmap, but boundaries, what is acceptable and not. And maybe some of the words don't exactly fit. Uh, and, 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 you know, apologies are needed because the words are not exactly right. That doesn't mean that this document does not get revised and reviewed as time goes on. So it becomes more refined and more specific. It, it's not cast in stone, so you're identifying some issues that we have to consider. But again, this board thought this was so important with everything that has been happening that we had to get it out now. And as, as Mrs. Ronnick said, this is the first time the whole board's been looking at it. So everything that's been said can be revised, will be revised as needed, as this board sees appropriate. But again, the boundaries have been identified as Mr. Fusco said. Most important though is that we owe to the constituents of this massive district responsibility to translate this to action, not just words, because, you know, everybody knows, everybody can say a lot of words, but it needs to translate to actions. And some of that again has already started with policy changes and, and hiring policies and including kids and, and other discussions and, and making sure the students are included. And as the other person had said, the, another commenter, female commenter, about how do I get in touch? And Dr. Russo said, well, contact the, you know, the principal of the school. So things are started, but I fully support what we are doing as a team. And I think, and I not think, I have confidence that our administration is on board with this and they understand where we're headed and they support our initiative. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Blackwood.
Okay, could, couldn't be, Rudnick is up next. I'm opening up your mic, so if you unmute yourself, you can begin your comments.
Did you unmute yourself?
Her icon is unmuted. I'm not sure if her microphone's connected properly.
Yeah, she's definitely.
In these cases, when community members aren't able to communicate properly, what is the best option for them to, to reach us? Would that be an email situation, do you think?
Uh, yeah, definitely. So we could follow up.
Let's see, hello?
Hello?
There we go.
All right. Okay, uh, can you hear me?
Good.
Hello?
Yes, we can, we can hear him. Go ahead. Mr. Rudnick, can you hear us?
I think she turned down her volume in order to not have the feedback, but then that stopped her from hearing us. That was what was going on there.
Well, Mrs. Rudnick, if you can hear us, if you would like to email your questions, that would also be fine. Or if you want to type it in the question and answer section.
Can we go to Mr. Seigler and maybe come back, give her a chance to see if she can fix her audio situation?
Yep, so I've just unmuted or un-disabled her talking. And, uh, Dr. Seigler is, uh, his mic is open and when you're ready, uh, you can begin your comments and unmute your mic.
Hey, good evening. I, I was glad that the, that someone commented who, uh, you know, had some concerns about the equity statement. I'm sure that there are many, many, many good people in the school district, pay their taxes and do, try and do the right thing who have not been as affected by the inequity of, uh, that, that exists and maybe feeling like, what? You know, waking up to this now. And I think it's really important to be able to, I, I thought the gentleman was, was very respectful and, and in, in his comment and how he expressed himself. And I think that it is incumbent upon the board to be ready with easy to understand and very clear examples of what we're talking about. I mean, the easiest example is to say, just Google Upper Dublin lawsuit and read that article. And that it's, it basically, it's like there's, there are situations where there was clear data indicating disproportionality. The school board, the school district knew it existed, didn't take steps to address it, open and closed. So, um, under, maybe getting away from using the word racism, which, you know, I don't have a problem with, but understanding is that there are inequities that we can clearly show exist and cannot explain away by, with ideas that we've come to understand that are just types of bias. And be ready to cite some of that research and be ready to also say what the harm is to the community, not just to the individuals affected, but to the community as a whole. But yeah, I mean, you could, you can sleepwalk all the way through life if you start out in the right place and never have to deal with this. And I think we have to be prepared to respectfully dialogue with folks that they feel that way. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Delmar. Point is then.
Okay, we have Ms. Rudnick again. We would like to try her again. I can open her mic if you'd like. Let's see, you're unmuted and if you were able to speak, go ahead, Ms. Rudnick, you can begin your comments.
Thank you, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, perfect, thank you very much. So my comment was actually going to be similar to Dr. Seigler's. I certainly appreciate the, Mr., I think Thompson, who was, spoke before. And I understand his point of view around the lack of data, right, to support the, the statements that were read. But I also want to assure Mr. Thompson that I have actually seen the data and I have experienced the very things that were being referenced in the statement. I go to a school where there is one child in, a one black child in the gifted program and I know that that cannot be so in reality. So therefore there is data that supports the statement that were made. So perhaps a suggestion would be to be more transparent about the data. And I think the statement is bold and I think the statement is appropriate. If you cannot track, if you cannot track the reason behind the disproportionality, then it is racism. That's just a fact. And you cannot not like the word disproportionality, but that is also a fact statistically shown by the data you have. And there's no other word to use except for disproportionality and except for racism. So I certainly, as an equal member of society, of your North Penn society, would be, in my lens, disappointed if the board were to consider, you know, railing in the words racism or disproportionality because we have one individual who is speaking up. So I am another, another individual who is speaking up against that motion. And that is because I have actually experienced it and I know you have the data to support it. And therefore I agree completely with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Seigler, show the data. Show the data and put the naysayers to bed because it is inappropriate for you as a board. And I know that's not what you're suggesting, but I want to make sure that it is recorded. To say that we will revisit the statements and potentially, you know, we've used the wrong words is no longer being bold to your beliefs and to what you committed to your constituents that did vote you in. Thank you very much.
Two things, Rick, as I think Mr. Summers can comment on this. We voted to move these as is, correct, Mr. Summers?
That's correct, in the form that they were presented on the agenda tonight.
This meeting was the opportunity to make those changes. And then second, just because we keep talking about data, if you'll see in the resolution itself, one of the things that we have is bi-annual data reviews. So speaking to Mr. Thompson, um, we understand that there are a number of people in this community who are not convinced, like yourself, that, that there are issues that need to be addressed. Um, and we do plan to make that case on a bi-annual basis in this district through that data review to show the improvements that we expect to be made based on the actions that we're taking.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Fusco. I just wanted to clarify that Ms. Wesley was the one that made the comments around revisiting, you know, what you have, the statements that you have. And that is what I am referencing when I say, you know, rolling back your, your, your statement.
Oh, let me, let me weigh in here and this is Kathy again. So my comments about revisiting were not, were not about revising what has been passed tonight because the board is in full agreement with what was passed. What I'm saying is that those, those words, those documents are a living document. They may be changed going forward, they may be made stronger to support different terminology as time goes on and as we improve. It's not to say that I'm rolling anything back, so please, I hope you don't take my words or, I, I'm sorry you took my comments as rolling back. My comments are strong, my comments are firm in support of what's there. But in terms of the gentleman that spoke, as we move on, the board may determine that we might want to edit things to be more clear and not roll back our position and our support of what we are focused and tasked to do as a board.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
And, and so I'd like to just, you know, with the comments that have been made, the context to this, actually embrace Mr. Thompson's comments and the challenge to the board to show our homework, so to speak. The reason why these statements have come about is not because we just read a headline and decided to move forward. I've been part of years of monthly meetings in which we have reviewed the data. I've been part of forums and, and, you know, community engagement in safe schools and at our board meetings in which we have gone over data. And we've actually challenged the administration to get us even more data that we want to make public as well. And that's us heeding the calls to our constituents because I'm a firm believer, communication, transparency and data, that creates accountability. And so I can understand why you may be taken aback by these statements and it is this board's responsibility to make sure the community understands why these statements are being made and, and if we need to clarify, we will. Those monthly meetings will continue to happen. We will absolutely share that data with the community and this is what it's all about. You know, North Penn leads, we don't follow. We're one of the, probably the first district, one of the first in PA, probably the first in Southeast Pennsylvania to put these statements out front and it's creating these conversations. I want to thank everyone who made those comments tonight. This isn't about us just being on a one-way train and not listening to anyone. We'll all make ourselves better if we actually begin to engage. And I want to thank Mr. Thompson in particular for being part of this process. And, uh, you know, welcome having those conversations with independent, objective data moving forward so we can come to a, a better understanding. We're all very proud of North Penn. The goal for us is to not keep our head in the sands. It's why we did a climate survey, it's why we're working on cultural proficiency. We believe in continuous improvement and we feel that we can show that to the community going forward. Thank you.
And this is, and we're going to talk about equity. We talk about.
Alan, you can hear yourself.
Kind of going to the kids, we talk about.
Alan, you, I think you can hear yourself.
You can't hear me, Tina?
Yeah, now, now it's better.
I just.
Yeah, that's, that's much better.
Thank you, Tina. When we talk about equity, we talk about full day kindergarten, we talk about improving the schools that the kids are in. We talk about putting together a rebate program for taxes for senior citizens and the disabled in the community. We talk about looking at all the policies in the school district and updating the policies of the school district. We talk about all these things to make the environment a more, and a better environment for everybody in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And I agree, that's ultimately our goal, right? Is to make this a better community for all, so. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Raise your hand in the interface. The Blu-ray's hand.
I think I saw Mr. Patch over again.
He was flashing in there before, his hand was coming and going. Mr. Patch, if you'd like to make comment, go ahead and raise your hand. And we have Mr. Patch on, it looks like Lauren Wilson would also like to make comment again. So I'm going to open up Mr. Patchel first. Mr. Patchel, when you're ready to begin, you can begin speaking.
Ready to go, I'm coming down the runway, here we go. Yeah, and I got my three minutes. It's been an arduous wait and there was quite a bit of dialogue, okay? And one thing you have to notice is, Mr. Thompson, I'm really surprised that you were able to sit there and make your reservations known. You know what? What you got going now is people trolling through Facebook. Oh, Ashley Bennett, what did she say that was so wrong? Was it all the truth? We can't say the truth anymore? Oh, administrative leave, how does that work? I'm saying this name so that if anybody does manage to listen to this broadcast, they're going to ask a lot of questions. And the points that she brought up, they were all the truth. And you can't bury it, you can't hide it. Now, as far as diversity, I've met with Dr. Dietrich many times. And I said, what about the ratio and gender of Bridle Path Elementary? You got three men and 17 women. You know what? I tell them it's a joke. You know what? I quit school in fourth grade because I got sick and tired of all these women that weren't my mom telling me no. You know what? When you get out on the street, you're dealing with people that talk, think and act completely different than this little group right here. And then you have a difficult time because you really don't know how to handle it. They have a difficult time in Washington because people jumping up and down on monuments, people that are doing bad things, people breaking windows. You know what? That's exactly the argument that the other side, you know what? You see how people act, see how they're all down in Ocean City with no mask on? The COVID's, oh, 40, 50,000 a week, 100,000 a week, 200,000 a week. The guy that's really got the answer is Mr. Sharaki. I want him to talk about, wow, our tax revenue is going to go right down the tube. And you know what makes everything work in America? Money and taxes. Now, the president administration, to keep beast, we just keep printing money. Why are you getting $3 trillion? You don't have the luxury of that. I want to see this district, you're not going to have any money. They're not going to cure unemployment. You know why? You look at automobile production. There are no cars being made. Why? Because nobody has confidence, nobody has any money. And my closing things, Ryan Holmes just increased the price of their townhouses right down the street from the ESE to the middle 300,000. I wonder how many poor, destitute folks will be buying that. And you're going to have inequality forever. Thank you.
Okay, and we also have Lauren Wilson would like to make comment. Again, there are no other hands raised. So Lauren Wilson, your microphone is open and you can begin your comments.
Okay, so I just wanted to add one other quick comment. So, you know, I'm in full support of showing the data. I think, you know, for all the parents on the call, you, you can always ask your principal to meet with you, to show you your specific schools data. I know that I personally have done that and, and had a really, really good discussion with my principal. And I think that having that data to support and, and really, really is needed. And I think that's really, really great. And I think that from a parent's perspective, you definitely can ask for. And I think maybe, again, the school district itself needs to be more open and sharing that. On a more regular basis. I think that would help for people to know that they don't have to look for it or ask for it. Whether in a small or large setting. I think that that's going to be very helpful as we move forward. So I just wanted to. A, tell the parents you can definitely ask for it yourself. If you're not sure what your school looks like. And then B, I think we definitely need to take more active step. In sharing it proactively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwood.
Okay, there are no other hands currently raised. And I think that will finish Audience Citizens' night.
All right then.
Mrs. Stoll, as we wrap up this evening's meeting, I just want to again thank those individuals who commented, who were participating and watching us now live. And those who will be watching us in the taped delay of the meeting. As you know, we did have a call to action a few weeks ago. Dr. Ruffo, Dr. Waters and I sent a letter to our school community. As a call to action, we had a tremendous response. We had more than 100 parents who joined us in a forum that we had then a few weeks ago. And I'm really encouraged by that involvement in our community. We have a cultural proficiency group that's been working very hard for the last couple of years. But we still have a distance to go. And there's, there's much more work to be done. So, and that, that work can only be done if we have the full involvement of all of our stakeholders. So I really thank the board. I thank our community members who were engaged this evening. And the entire school community who is coming together to be able to help us as we work through all of this. So a big thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. And I, on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank the administration for all the work that they are doing as well. I know it's the. That you've effort that you guys have all made over the last several years. And this is my. Mr. Thompson's point, like, I cannot be prouder of North Penn. I think North Penn is a great school district, a wonderful school district. Given my, so many things. And, you know, I just think that there's room for improvement for everybody, right? No one's perfect. So I think this is just, you know, something that we have to face and something that we're going to do. And I'm just very proud to be part of this team that's willing to, you know, tackle this tough issue and ask the tough questions and have the tough conversations. And, you know, we're just gonna, you know, continue with our work on that. So thank you for everybody on this panel for what you've done. Appreciate the effort and the work that's going into it. Is there any other comments or questions this evening? All right then. So our next meeting will be next Thursday, June, or July 16th, 7 o'clock. So I have a motion to return.
Moved.
Thank you. Have a nice evening, everyone.